...for religious stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, do we need a roll call?
Roll call.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Director Viall.
Present.
Director Ashka.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Miller.
Here.
Thank you. This evening's study session is going to deal with our innovative processes and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Superintendent Santorino to begin to lead us through the process that we're going to follow tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Viall. We're excited to be here today. I think this represents a lot of work over a long period of time. Remember those, Directors, remember those board meetings where we were trying to figure out what innovation meant? And the circumstances under which we would call schools innovative? I remember when Director Viall suggested that we apply for an innovative district and the first thing I thought to myself was, oh, we can't, we can't do that. And so, we've come a long way and it's really exciting to see the work. I really want to praise Toni Pace and her team. They have really done the hard work. This is the, has been the nitpicky, dot the i's, cross the t's, and figure out what's next and what to do next that she's worked through with quite a few people. So, we're excited about this agenda and have a challenge for you today and so I think it's going to be a good meeting. Thanks Toni. Will you take us?
Yes.
Next steps.
Am I on? Okay. I can't hear it. I'm excited about this too and I remember those days very well as we tried to figure out what innovation was and I think we've done a really great job of defining that. And I think we're to start off today by kind of taking a little walk down memory lane and remembering back in 2011 when we were identified by Randy Dorn as an innovative district-wide innovation zone. And the reason, part of the reason for that is we had, what was it, about 11 schools out of 33 that were identified as innovative. And we made a pretty good case for, for that and, and we were awarded that. And we hear about it all the time, I think. When we go down to Olympia, when they come here, they talk about our schools, we hear about them all the time. From there, we started to adopt some policies to set that foundation. And the first policy was Policy 0105, which is called Innovating for Achievement, to provide direction and parameters for innovative models. And basically, it said that Tacoma School District Number 10 supports creative and bold innovations that enhance school performance and student achievement as an essential part of meeting the benchmarks of a strategic plan. We encourage well-founded, data-driven, and prudent innovations that offer choices for different learning styles so that all children will achieve academic excellence. That's a quote out of that policy. And you do have a copy of those policies in the back of your little binder there to refer to if you want to. And then from there, two years later, the Board adopted Policy 2010, which is entitled Innovation School Definition: Adoption. And this is kind of what we're doing tonight, is, is looking at the process of identifying new innovative schools. And so, the, the policy sets out, again, a quote from the policy is that Tacoma School District Number 10 supports creative and bold innovations that enhance school performance and student achievement as an essential part of meeting the benchmarks of a strategic plan. Along with 2010, we have a set of regulations, which you also adopted a little later on, a couple months later, which are the Performance Frameworks, which are 2010 R, the Regulations. And they pretty much outline how you want to measure the success of, of schools. And they're set up by levels, so we have the Elementary Performance Matrix, we have Middle School, and we have High School. And we're asking our innovations to show progress in the area of achievement. And also noted in your policy is having stability financially. So, that's a, an important piece to it. And then finally, on September 25th, 2014, you adopted Policy 2015, which is School Innovation to Identify How Approved Innovative Schools Receive Autonomy and Flexibility as Well As Identify Accountability Measures. So, in that policy, you are allowing our current innovative schools to seek some waivers from things like curriculum instruction, staffing, budgeting processes, transportation, and things along those lines. Those schools have to show that they are, they are achieving successfully in order to qualify for a waiver. And so, that's that policy and it's delineated out the process that, that schools must follow. So, those are the policies that you have initiated, that we are following, and like Carla said, trying to cross the t's and dot the i's, so that we are following the policies as you laid them out. One of the things that you did ask for as we go through the, the month of January here is, is the month that you look at current, the, the portfolio of schools and begin to see if there are certain needs in the district that you don't see fulfilled in our current portfolio. And again, I have to thank Dan Vopel for his work on this portfolio. It's the, the purple-blue document that you have, as you open it up, you see the, the map that you asked for, I think several school board meetings ago, where you can actually see innovative schools are. Dan has also provided for you the levels, so you have different colors for different levels, elementary, middle, high school. And then we have the other, which is our K8. We did include the Whittier-Wainwright Intermediate Schools on this even though they're not, you know, any, close to being done or anything, but they're definitely in progress and we wanted to make sure that we, yes, there's more copies there for people, I brought those, thank you, that we did depict them on this map as well. These schools are schools that have been identified by the state as well as the district as innovative. You have the Science and Math Institute, that's our SAMI, Geiger-Montessori, you have Foss High School, International Baccalaureate Program. You have Lincoln High School, which started with Lincoln Center and it's now taking Lincoln Center across the entire school, Lincoln 2.0. You have Geodrome Middle School, which has the International Baccalaureate Middle Years Program. Baker Middle School, which is the National Board Professional Teaching Certification. You have Stafford Elementary School with the Art Infused Education. First Creek Middle, which is providing a range of social services to students and has an enormous amount of partnerships with the community for their different needs in the building. You have McCarver Elementary, which is the Primary Years Program. You have the School of the Arts, which is one of our first innovative schools. Again, Bryant-Montessori. Grant Center for the Expressive Arts, we put this in here, it hasn't really been identified by the district or the state as an innovative school, yet it's been in our district for several years. And if you note below, they are in the process of getting the designation by the state. So, they're going through that, that application process, we're helping them with that. And we wanted to show that they've been here for a long time and wanted to give them that, that recognition. And then Meeker Middle School is a STEM school. And then again, you have the Whittier-Primary-Wainwright Intermediate Schools listed there. We also wanted to just kind of bring to your attention some of the school, some of the programs, some of the areas that we're still working on, some, some ideas that are in early stages of planning. There's an apprenticeship program at, that runs through Mount Tahoma Stadium, is SODA and SAMI, where students are gaining on the job, training and receiving credit for that through an apprenticeship program. We have an East Side/South Side project-based program, which has a strong partnership that we're working on. And then we have innovative technology that we're working on at Arlington, Stafford, and Sherman, which is a kind of a flipped technology program where I know there's some, like for instance, you have Stafford, which has already got the art infusion, but they're also infusing technology and, and making that really exciting for students to bring the art alive through technology. So, those are some of the, the programs that are in the early stages of planning.
So, one of the things we wanted you to see is the difference between school-wide innovation, which is the map, and have the visual per year request to see what resources and opportunities are in which part of the town. And then, as Toni mentioned, we really wanted you to see some other pieces in the works, but those are not school-wide programs. Those are, they're, they're accessible for all students, but it's not the defining program of the school itself.
So, there are programs within a school, is that what you're saying, Dr. Garcia?
Correct. For example, Mount Tahoma is not an apprenticeship school. It has a program that allows kids to access apprenticeship programs, so there's infrastructure there, but that is not a defining factor of the school in, in the sense of thematic-based in there. So, technology at Arlington, Stafford, and Sherman. So, families at home may be saying, well, isn't there technology in every school? Yes. But there's an intentional effort where we're piloting and trying different programmings to change what the opportunities are for those kids in those schools. It's not going to be a technology-based school. It is a program that's offered in there and from there, it will continue to grow. So, the distinctions are, the ones on the map that you have, those are specific schools with specific school codes. And then the other programs would be programs that don't acquire a specific school code.
Are there any questions of Mrs. Pace so far? Director Miller? Director Winskill?
Nope.
Director Ashka? I knew you did.
I have one question. I see the reference to the East Side/South, South Side project-based program, and I'm not sure what you're referring to. Can you?
Pardon me?
The East Side/South Side project-based program, I'm, I'm not familiar with what you're talking about, or at least it's not ringing a bell.
You want to go for that?
Yeah. Currently, we're exploring the opportunity to create a project-based learning element in a, with, through a public-private partnership. And so, through the TAF Academy, we're exploring the opportunity of what would that look like in an east or south side elementary school? No decisions have been made, there is no work plan yet, it's just the, the initial process of that. So, we wanted to present that to you tonight so that you would have the opportunity to consider that, if that was one of, if you choose to offer a program, or a school, forgive me, if you choose to put out an RFP for a school, you would have that knowledge.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's a public-private partnership with the TAF Academy, the Technology Access Foundation, excuse me, Technology Access Foundation, not the Academy itself, the Academy's a school. It is not designed to be a school. It is, they, we would partner with them to create project-based learning opportunities for a school. It would be an intentional effort where they would be donating resources, training staff potentially, on what does project-based learning look like at the elementary level. It would not be a school code change.
Project-based learning based on technology?
It does not have to be based on technology, but the idea of project-based learning, and so they're very open to, they have the expertise around technology, they are looking at what that would look like, but that would really be determined by the staff that chooses to implement that if it does go through. And they, they're really trying to implement is project-based learning that is connected to the community. And so, based on what the students choose for their projects, there may be elements of technology, but it does not have to be the deciding factor.
That makes sense. Okay.
Questions? I have a question, I have a comment, and I'm not sure this is where, where it fits, but we have Whittier and Wainwright that we're going to be designating as innovative schools. Wainwright will be opening in 2016, and I know that Sam is currently, Sam Bell's operation Steve are currently getting ready to start looking at the boundary issues for those. When, on the west side, we now have three innova, we'll have three innovative schools plus DeLonge and Hunt that is scheduled to open in 2020. And what I'd like to request is that when we do this boundary review for Whittier and Wainwright, that we look at it as a west side area and do an overlay boundaries in including Hunt, so that when Hunt opens in 2020, parents will know whether they live in the Hunt neighborhood or whether they don't, where those boundaries need to be looked at. So, to look at them as a system-wide approach on that side of town, to give some certainty to parents who live in Furcrass, the first part of University Place, that, so that we're not doing it again piecemeal two or three years down the line when Hunt comes onboard. I think it would help us with that neighborhood and I also think it would give some certainty to parents. So, I would ask that we look at that. Director Ashka?
Thank you. To piggyback on that, I mean, ultimately, Director Viall, and I discussed this very briefly prior to the meeting, but it seems to me that a, a look at where our boundaries lie now, across the, a look at where our boundaries are now across the district would be a prudent thing to do, particularly when some of our middle schools are getting pretty pushed on capacity, because we don't just want to have innovation, we want to make sure that there's a seat available for every student.
I've spent the last two or three days interviewing and doing an innovative project at First Creek. And, you know, it, again, it shows that we need to really look at the capacity of First Creek and the numbers. So, I, what I hear the Board asking for is a broader look at the boundaries and to make sure we look at the Hunt, we look at some of those southeast, those south schools especially that are getting big and take a look at them.
And I, how current our demographic data is, you may or may not know that way prior to my Board experience, I was on the Citizens Committee for School Consolidation and we did a lot of information then. And I have a particular frustration because I remember standing up at that meeting and saying, when Charlie Chan rebuilds, you're going to have a lot of kids and you need to plan for that. And I was told that I was wrong. But it might be a good time because with the economy up and down and sales prices changing to, to update our demographic projections, unless it's already there and I don't know.
So, Mr. Bell has talked about getting a small committee together. We had a meeting last week and talked briefly about getting the committee together that included Sandra Jacobson to look at that. And he's also going to touch base with, is that Lee?
Les.
Les. Les Kendrick, to take, to get, take an updated look at our boundaries, I mean, our population enrollment. So, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Okay.
Karen, I have something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, you know, when I, when we talk about looking at boundaries for the whole city, I, I know by experience that once Stewart is remodeled and reopened, that we will fill that up and probably take, relieve some of the pressure at First Creek. So, I think it would be a little premature to do a boundary change right then, I mean, right now. We wouldn't want to have to transport the students to Hunt for two years. So, I guess I'd want to be really careful about that, but I think people are going to be willing to go to Stewart as soon as it's done. So, I think we need to take that into consideration. And then as far as the Hunt proposal, so, I'm feeling, I, I, you know, I, I don't think it's a bad proposal, but I'm thinking that a lot of people are going to be, want to go to Wainwright because of the 5'8" configuration. So, I think that's something we have to take into consideration. They're going to, people are going to like that, I think.
Well, they also number, and I do live there and have for 45 years, are, are still concerned about the lack of a comprehensive middle school, Debbie. And I think you'll see a lot of the DeLonge kids, the Geiger kids, even some of the Whittier kids who want to go to a comprehensive high school for the sports and what that, what that brings. So, I would like to make sure that they know where those options are because right now there's a, a large number of Whittier-DeLonge kids that are going to Truman and Mason, and Truman and Mason are overcrowded.
That's true.
And also, there's over 100 kids that are going over to University Place Middle School in, within my own neighborhood, and I'd certainly like to have those kids come back. Thank you. Director Ashka?
Along those same lines, I mean, I think this is exactly why we need to look at all that data as we're looking at the ideas as well. I mean, if you look at the east and south end, yes, if you can get all the way across town, you can go to SAMI, but it's a challenge. So, how do we make sure that there's similar opportunities that lessen burdens on individual families who don't require privilege to access? I mean, that's part, I hope, part of our whole study with looking at the facts and information.
And so, the whole process of drawing boundaries and looking at, you know, lines and school sizes, I think is much as an art as it is a science.
Agreed.
And so, that we're going to have to look, we're going to have to, you're exactly right, we're going to have to look at the data and then look at our options and look at, you know, have, definitely have some Plan A, B, C, and D, because there will be some unknowns. And so, if we can, and I think the primary piece that you're right is that we have to let our parents know exactly, you know, what the options are and what may influence the line, you know, where it's going to be drawn, and so that we can be transparent and fluid with our, you know, with our predictions about what we're going to do with the boundaries.
And I just have to say out loud while maintaining open enrollment, because I think that's an important feature of our business.
Definitely maintaining open enrollment, I agree.
With neighborhood first choice.
Correct.
I also think we need to take into account charter schools that would be opening up and how that will impact our schools too. So...
That's an, you know, that's an unknown that we've talked about.
Could have been.
It's an unknown that we, you know, we've talked about, that we don't really know how it's going to have an effect. So, it's going to be an interesting endeavor.
Yes.
And I think that as long as we, you know, really look at all the different options and think about the different scenarios and really examine them so that we're not surprised by something that comes up and say, okay, we knew that if that happened, if, if everybody goes to Stewart and Stewart fills up, then we're going to move the line a little bit this way. So, I think that, you know, we'll just have to be really flexible with the way we do it. And the, the challenge is going to be helping our parents understand that because, you know, one thing I know that is important about, you know, that parents choosing the schools, they want to know, you know, what school they're going to go to based on where they live, where they're assigned, even though they do, they know they have choices. So, we just have to do a really good job, really good job. We've got time to put some energy into it, we're starting now, which I think is good. And we'll just be real deliberate about the work that we do and bring it to you often for an update.
Thank you. President Hines has arrived, I shall turn the meeting over to him.
All right. Thank you. And so, catch me up?
We're on the Section C.
Section C.
All right. Thank you.
So, recommendation from the Superintendent is really, so, you know, this is the first time we've gone through this whole process, and this is the first time we've gotten to the place where we've really asked for, you know, a request for a proposal from the Board. And, you know, so I want to remind you and the public that this is going to be an annual process. So, it's not that we think we're going to catch every idea, you know, this first time, but it's kind of, we go back to all that, all the data that we've collected. And if you remember the retreat that we had, the Board had a pretty in-depth discussion about, you know, where the needs were and what we needed to do. And one of the things they talked about was really about having options on the east and south side, and I think the, the portfolio bears that out, that, you know, there needs to be an additional option for some of our, either, either in the south side or east side. And that we talked about, the Cabinet talked a lot about a secondary school we thought, you know, was needed. And so, the process from here would be, so I'm recommending that we do an RFP that includes a south or east side secondary school, gives us a lot of option. We think that it addresses a projected rise of enrollment in that area. You see the parameters there, and I, I don't think that it means that, you know, the, the Board has the discretion to look beyond some of those if you get a proposal that is just so incredibly good that it's worth, you know, spending the money on. But basically, we don't want people to think that they should come in with an idea that's going to cost a million dollars because we don't have a million dollars allotted for it. We want it to be, it has to have an existing facility, so we're not interested in having people come and say, you know, we're going to buy a lot or buy, use this facility. We, we want them to work with a school to have an existing facility. We don't want it to duplicate a current program and cost-neutral as possible. So, that's, that's what we recommend at this time. We don't really, we've talked about it a lot, and I think the Board's talked about it too, that we don't have the capacity right now to take on something huge, we're in the middle. Roslin's been, I think, very cautious in taking a look at our budget. We don't know what McCleary's going to do, what the funding's going to look like, so we're not in a position where we can say, hey, you know, let's just, you know, let's do something. But on the other hand, we really want to serve. We want to serve some students in that area and we want to give them an opportunity. And we feel like there are lots of options out there that we could bring that would be a real good opportunity to innovate for achievement for our students, and that's the other thing. It's not in the parameters that says it has to, you know, improve or attract students for their achievement. That's been embedded in all of the work that we've done. So, that's, that's my recommendation.
So... Scott's in charge.
Yeah.
So, are you going to move into the PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah. I was just going to take a little bit of time to show you how you've outlined this process in your district policy. You know, what does it mean, you know, if you do an RFP now, and what is the process going to be? So, I was just going to run through that, it's only a few slides, and then basically we're opening up for discussion if that's okay.
Yeah. Sounds good. Thank you.
So, as Carla mentioned, this is an annual process and we don't expect that, you know, we're going to answer all of the needs this evening. And as we go through this the first time, I'm sure there's going to be some bumps along the way, but we, we recognize this as an annual process. So, which one do you want to push? This one? Or this one? This one? I pushed all of them and nothing happened. Wait, let me see.
Oh, you got it.
There we go. I figured it out. Thank you very much.
It knew you were going, Sean, it knew you were going to yell at us.
I looked down and I saw the little arrow, so that, that spoke to me. Okay. So, here is what the process is if you advertise for an RFP. In February, the district advertises for an RFP and identifies the parameters a proposal must adhere to. So, Carla identified some parameters in, in her recommendation and those, you know, you may decide that you, if you want to do an RFP, that you have more or you have less or whatever. The RFP, RFP process is open from February to April, this is all per-year policy. In May, the RFPs are reviewed and scored by the Program Placement Committee, which are representatives of department, all the departments in the district. The Board reviews the scores and in June determines if an RFP meets the identified needs of the district. So, at that point, you would re, look at all of the RFPs and the ratings and, and then make that decision. If the Board accepts a proposal, the following academic year will be used as a planning and implementation year with quarterly updates to the Board. If the Board does not accept a proposal, no new innovative schools will go forward until January 2016 when the above process starts all over again. And I need to thank Sean Taylor for his pictures here for the, there's a visual of, of the RFP process if, if you advertise for one. So, just, thank you. I'll just show you that right there. And it shows you how it goes from January 2015 all the way through the following 2016. And you can see a visual of that. If you do not advertise for an RFP, which this, nowhere in your, nowhere in your policy have you said that you have to have an RFP, so you might decide that this isn't the year or you don't want to do one. So, if you don't advertise for an RFP, no school, no new school proposals would be accepted or reviewed. The district will focus time and resources on the innovations currently approved and those new innovations that are in the beginning stages of implementation. There's no, they're not actually on the map, but they're in your agenda. And next January 2016, the Board would again review the district's portfolio and decide whether to advertise an RFP. And you have another visual of that. So, I didn't do a very good job of that, did I? There's, there's the, yeah. The arrows are really nice. So, that takes us through the process and then on to the last section of the agenda, which is the Board discussion.
And I just want to interrupt for a minute and say, you know, there may be a, you know, there may be a time when we just want to waive, you know, waive this policy because something comes along that is so incredible and somebody wants to do something that we think we're going to act. So, I just want to make sure that we're clear that it doesn't preclude, you know, precludes some outstanding opportunity that we want to take advantage of.
It would be a fault if our process inhibited innovation when it's an innovative policy.
Yes. Exactly.
All right. Questions and comments? I'll start with Director Miller and we'll just work our way around the table.
Go ahead, Director Winskill.
I just have a question, Superintendent. So, when you're talking, do you, are you, do you envision this as a school within a school? You know, when you were talking about building, I, I don't quite understand what your thought is on that.
I think it could be a couple, my, my first, my first thinking of it is probably a school within a school, that that would be, you know, an opportunity for, you know, it could be a current high school that, you know, does a, a special, you know, a special subset. It doesn't preclude, it doesn't preclude a whole, you know, and a, a secondary school coming to us and say, you know, we really want to look at, you know, we heard a proposal from Mount Tahoma a couple of years ago about really looking at career trades, and so, who knows, they might come and say they were really going to pursue this and look at it. So, I think it could be, we wouldn't close the door to either one.
So, my thoughts on the specialty high school is that it would be more of a knowledge-based school than a process-type school. So, that's just, I'm just telling you how, where I'm leaning. I, I just think things that really invigorate students to learn more is what I'm looking at and I just think that they're more successful. So, you know, like SAMI, science, SODA, arts, so I'd like to look at something similar to that.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Director Winskill.
That's it for me.
Director Ashka.
My first question actually is for Director Winskill because I don't understand what she means between the, a knowledge-based and a process-based school. she means between a knowledge-based and a process-based school.
Well, over the years, there's been like tech school and, you know, I want to see, well, so, you know, like if you had a language immersion school, I want to have something that's, when I look at people who are National American Scholars, they're always students who have a lot of background knowledge. They've read the encyclopedia, they read all the time. And I just feel that we're kind of losing some of that knowledge-based material, you know, in our district. And I see like the classes that used to be offered in our district that are no longer offered, botany, environmental science, history, except for American history. And I just feel that it really enriches a student and really makes them much more successful later. So I'd like to see, that's what I'd like to see.
Thank you for that clarification. I was a philosophy major, so I can totally appreciate your comments. I don't know a lot of people that have read.
Father Coplestone?
I was going to say The Republic by Plato. Or that's a Plato or contemporary psychology and why our education is the way it is now in democracy. But that's what I did in college because I thought it was fun.
Yeah, me too. But we're nerds, no.
Yeah, well, I'm pretty good at policy as a result, so it's relevant, right? Drawing those lines can be really hard, and there's a lot of conversation. Of course, I work at a community college, and one of the things community colleges now are doing are actually bachelors of applied science because there is a lot of dialogue between that knowledge-based and that process-based and what employers need. And so there's, so I appreciate the conversation a lot, and it's one that I've been in, I feel like, since I graduated high school. And that is, what is the goal of education? Is it the enrichment of learning and what that does for us as people and character? Or is it to get a job that has a defined income? Ideally, I think that it's a partnership between the two because we want to be literate, engaged, and a continuous learners, and we need to have houses and pay for our kids to go to college so that they can have the same experience. Thank you for that. That being said, I've got a couple of questions, and then I have a couple of thoughts. On your perimeters, the second one does not duplicate a current program or thing. I kind of want to dig into that a little bit because when I look at, I think that you probably already know what I'm going to say. When I look at the south end, east side, I think, you know, if you were going to do a secondary option that somehow leveraged current TPS resources, and we certainly have some empty buildings in the east and south end that belong to the school district or they're in temporary use capacity. And then we look at places like Swan Creek, which is a huge swath of land that should be a gem of Tacoma that we're just beginning to tap as a community, or Wapato Park or things like that, that could offer things that are similar to Sammy, for instance, or similar to the art school, for instance, but they serve a different audience because they allow access. I don't know that I would be opposed to redundancy if what it did was expanded access to people who might not otherwise have it. And so I wanted to get my.
That makes sense. That totally makes sense. You're right.
And I don't want people to shut, not think in that way because I think that we want to encourage that kind of thought process.
Real briefly, the intent of the recommendation around the parameter was to continue to expand the portfolio. So it wasn't to say that there was not elements or current programs that could not be replicated, but not to say that we're just going to take another, for example, cookie cutter and say, we want another soda exactly the way soda is and put it on the east side.
I agree, and I agree 100%. I just don't want people to limit their imagination based on, gosh, if this has anything, if this has anything to do with going out and doing science in a park, I can't do it.
Correct. Yeah. And just those, those high leverage elements may be a part of that, but it may just be a different, to build on Director Wenskill's, it may be a different thematic approach.
And really, by essence of who Sammy is and who soda is, those are very individual communities that have created themselves organically. So I don't think that you could, you couldn't cookie cutter Sammy if you wanted to, I would say. But I'm sure I'll get proven wrong at some point.
So we should make that real clear when we're writing the RFP.
Yeah.
Because I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, there is, I also have a strong feeling that's going to sound competing about not duplicating tax dollars, right? So there's a balance there on how that approach takes place. And maybe that's how we write it so they understand that we don't want the same thing, but we want your mind to be open. The only other comment that I have right now, and I agree with the general recommendation, is that when we go through this, these wonderful arrows that we appreciate so much, I know that after we got past RFP and during that process, we would be having dialogue with our community and allowing public comment, but I don't see it on the flow chart. And I wonder if any of our public documents can just say that someplace because I want to make sure that our community knows that, that it's a continuing partnership, especially as we're just initiating this process.
Absolutely.
In truth, for the first time today. And that's all I have right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice President Viall.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of comments. I totally agree with what Director Wenskill's talking about. I, you know, having been in school when, you know, liberal arts were the way to go and then you went off from there because you received, and Director Hines was where I'm coming from, because we both studied liberal arts-type things, that knowledge-based then applied into science. And I have a brother who's a quite well-known scientist who would tell you his liberal arts education helped him greatly in his career. So I know what you're talking about and totally, totally agree with that. I've got a couple of comments. Nowhere in here, and I think this comes back to what Director Ashka was just talking about on no duplication, I'd like to see, since it's a core value, the word equity that these RFPs provide, look for equity throughout the district. And I think that might address some of what you were talking, that we, for a new high school or a middle school or something on the east side, and equity, it's a matter of equity, not duplication if we choose to do a science school or we choose to do.
Yeah, so we're looking at a whole district perspective, actually. That's probably a good way of.
It is our value, we've talked about. So I'd like to see that. I also would like to see, I know we said early on that we weren't going to do innovation for the sake of looking cute or whatever. Sorry for that, you know, kind of smart remark. But I would also like to say, underlying all programs, schools of innovation will demonstrate increased academic achievement.
So two underlining principles, or maybe one. Any school that applies has to meet your threshold of all your other policies. So your policies around innovation for achievement, which has the performance matrix. And so the work that Tony tried to do or did, excuse me, outlining those previous policies.
Yeah.
Those are fundamental pieces and are, if you will, givens. That if you do not address these things, achievement, you will be, based on your previous numerous hours of discussions, you either have to meet these performance metrics or, and you have a system in place where those should be the considering factors of, if you decided to do an RFP, and then if you decided to accept one of the proposals, they would have to account for all those things.
I guess I would like that more clearly stated in instructions if we do decide to do RFPs, that those be the leadoff. So I've seen a lot of givens in my day that got ignored over the years, and I would just like to make sure that people understand that if they do business or want to, our programs in our school district, they will be equitable and they will increase academic achievement for all of our kids.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
And they'll also be monitored just for the sake of argument every five years. Excuse me, every year. And what you have is a trigger that if they're not performing after five years, you have a responsibility to stop the program. And so you were very clear that you, in the early days, that you wanted mechanisms that if folks were not following through, that you had a responsibility to stop that program, that school, if you will, and say it's, we're not just innovating for being different, we're innovating for that achievement.
Great, thank you.
And those are all grounded in those policies. So if those folks that are home are considering maybe putting in a proposal or anything, they would have that background. But we'll make those, if you choose to do an RFP, we will make sure that those are cross-referenced throughout.
Okay, great. One other comment, I am concerned about where the budget stuff is in terms of looking at new programs because as we all know, you know, that's the Grinch that shows up and is there, if an RFP is, you know, I guess I would make, I'd like to see us look perhaps at making a approval of an RFP contingent upon the dollars being available to successfully implement that. Because how many times have we started programs and all of us that have been around the block know we've done that? And then they get down the line and we don't have the money to continue them. And so that they're, yeah, exactly. So that we have a, at least a six-year budget, I would look at that. Rosalyn, is that reasonable to you?
Yeah, and one of the things that we've talked.
I'm sorry, I jumped in. Is it okay for her to respond? Thank you.
Sorry. One of the things that we have talked about in the development of the RFP is different weighting factors. And so in a traditional RFP, finance RFP, we're going out and buying services, we put a component in there for the financial aspect of it, and then we weight that based on all the other criteria that we've asked for. And that has a factor in the way they end up in the ranking, the proposals. And so we could build something like that into it as an option and ask for a six-year budget.
You know, my concern is the issue of sustainability.
Absolutely.
And I would hate to have us start a great program and then it goes off the cliff at the end of a year, something that can be made to be sustainable. I mean, we can have a Cadillac, but we can sustain it at a Chevy level if we have to do it for a while. And that's what I would like to make sure that that's built in.
I see no reason we couldn't model it after our current practice and we do a five-year for any implementation.
That's what I'm talking about. Make sure that our RFP, I guess what I'm asking for is that our RFP process for finance follows what we currently are doing for the entire district, that we're not exempting. If that, I think that will keep us out of trouble, give us ability to really see the financial implications of something. Thank you. Thanks.
Well, I'm excited that we're having this conversation. I've heard colleagues in other districts from around the state talk about they just don't have the capacity to entertain these sorts of thoughtful conversations. So I am very excited to be a part of this. Before I get into my questions, kind of a clarifying question, if you would answer, please, around who is eligible to submit an RFP?
We deliberately did not decide that because, and we deliberately tried to limit the parameters because when we thought about innovation, Superintendent Santono's a great reminder, he said, you don't know what you don't know. And so we wrestled around with that. Is that only staff, current staff, current schools? Is that outside folks that want to propose, community members? And we deliberately didn't have any guidance within our policy. We do have past practice where we've entertained ideas from the community, but we felt that that should be a board decision of who should be eligible to submit an application.
And I appreciate that. We had a conversation when the Charter Commission was here, and one of the things that we offered is that if there are people in the community that had ideas, we had infrastructure in place and we had a culture of wanting to look for new ways to remove barriers and reach more kids. And I think we continue to challenge ourselves to diversify our portfolio. So I would encourage us to figure out ways to be receptive and adaptive to those community policies and give them a serious consideration. Director Miller earlier referred to the charter schools and us taking them into consideration when we make decisions. And I think that there's an opportunity for us to be in direct dialogue with community members that have ideas for particular programs in particular locations in the city so that we have some control over the finances that are involved in that, making certain that they meet our, not only innovative policy, but the other things that we've grounded in policy, the equity policy that doctor, or that the doctor, the director of biology just referred to.
Almost got there.
I think that there is absolutely a spirit of collaboration on this board and within this district, that we're not going to reject a good idea, but we want to be able to use our existing system in order to implement it. And I think we have a track record of success, and I would put our track record up against anybody's out there. And I think where we're headed in terms of achievement, being laser-like focused on getting more kids graduated from high school, historic highs, I think that there's all sorts of opportunity to build upon that. And we are, I guess I'm interested in knowing if there's been any conversation up to this point around satellite campuses. So I think we decided as a board that innovation is not a marketing gimmick, it's a methodology. And so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. If we know there's a demand for soda or Sammy on the east side, how do you maintain the integrity of that soda or Sammy system but create opportunity, removing travel barriers and other things that might limit access for kids, and put those sorts of satellite campuses into neighborhoods?
We specifically did not have those conversations as a cabinet. We were charged with the process and the policy around, first, raising the question of, do you want us to put out an RFP? And then if so, what would be the parameters of that RFP? And that's your, really your task tonight, to guide us to make those decisions. If you choose not to do an RFP, you can always send us back to say, we'd like to explore these opportunities. As Superintendent Santono said, this is not the only vehicle for us to consider innovation. With this, though, you do have a policy and you have an obligation to determine if you want an RFP or make the determination that you do not want RFP. To be clear, even if you put out an RFP, if no one submits an application that meets the threshold of your RFP, does not mean that you automatically have to choose one of submitted. You still have that, and that's built within your policy and the procedures. We as staff really tried, and Superintendent Santono reminded us, we didn't want to put too many boxes around this and say, we want you to consider this or this. We wanted to have this be a process that really consider what are the innovative opportunities that will come to us. Our recommendations, Superintendent's recommendations are really around some of your previous conversations around equity and accessibility in different, so we look at that, we place the item or the programs currently on the map. And then potential enrollment trends and potential leverages in regards to your strategic plan benchmarks, high school graduation, verified acceptance letters. So we looked at secondary, but we even took a step further not to describe middle school or high school because we felt like that would place a box in there. Now, you can choose to put additional parameters if you choose to do an RFP that can put more structure around that, including satellite, variety of other pieces.
I think part of it is that the process is a learning process also. And, I mean, I always, I'll be honest, I always get nervous when we say, you know, just, you know, send us anything. But I think what you do is you learn what's out there and what people's ideas are, and then you know that for your next RFP, you got to be more specific about this, or specific, sorry, specific about this, you know, piece. So I think we'll learn something from the first step out if we take it, you know, at this time, and then we'll go from there.
All right, Director Wenskill.
My concern is that people do a lot of work on the front end, doing, developing this RFP, and then it's something that we absolutely do not want. So is there a vetting process partway through where they call, like Tony, and say, I'm thinking of this? And she can say, yeah, that's a fine direction or it's not. I mean, it's off the wall and it's not going to work.
So in our, in our process, we've had a sponsor. So that's the answer, isn't it, Tony?
Well, yes, we, you know, we still will try to provide a sponsor for the individual and we'll have, you know, set that out in the RFP, that, you know, is something that we can provide for people, especially those external candidates that need help navigating the system and, you know. We have a little bit of a new application form because we have the waiver piece that we're adding into it as well. And it's pretty similar to what we've done in the past. But yeah, I think that the sponsor piece is a really important one so that people feel like they've got someone they can call and ask some questions and get some help.
That's good.
I think we also have to guard against, we're there to provide technical support as staff members. We're there to sponsor if we see it's appropriate, but we also be bringing you all the considerations. So I think to get to your point, Director Wenskill, I think it's important that we provide as many parameters as you feel comfortable with. That provides clarity of what you will be looking for, but the staff is not approving the new concept. You will be approving that if you choose to put out that RFP.
So I just have a question, and I think it's more directed to my colleagues and to the superintendent. The recommendation is that we have this as an action item at the February 2nd board meeting.
The second board meeting in February.
Okay, all right. So that was what I was going to clarify because I want us to have an opportunity for a community to respond. Emails, phone calls, come and offer public comment on the process before we take formal action. So I get, I withdraw my question because you've clarified the date.
That would be February 26th.
26th of February.
Thank you. Director Ashka.
I have a couple more comments more directed at my colleagues on the board because we get so little opportunity to actually talk to each other about these ideas. And I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I want to go back to the process knowledge conversation because, and it's probably because I'm coming a little bit from a, to your college perspective, looking at this. When I hear we don't want process, I hear that if Bates did a collaboration with somebody else and they set up an aeronautics program that trained our kids for entry-level jobs making 50 grand at Boeing, we don't want that because that's process-based.
That's not process in my definition.
Okay, that's what I wanted, thank you very much. I'm glad I asked that question. I just wanted to make sure that that's not what I was hearing because not everybody's cut out to study Plato, thank God. The other question, I really appreciate Director Viall's comments about the budget and the
comments about the budget and the longevity of that. And I absolutely support sustainability. At the same time, the question that I asked myself as we did that is that, had we done all that foresight with Sammy, for instance, which I don't believe was done, would we have done Sammy?
Director, you're talking about Sammy, which was not done. There was no fiscal, no planning fiscally for Sammy.
Right.
And, yeah.
Well, and I guess, I guess I hope that, and I think I'm hearing this, that we're willing to partner with people to help them figure out those things, that they don't have the kind of financial literacy to do that on their own, because that is quite a broad skill set, one that I admire a great deal. But, okay, I just want to make sure that we're not limiting people that way.
And, you know, and given an RFP and having an opportunity to examine it, also gives you an opportunity to say, "Hey, you know, this idea is worth putting off this, you know, not doing this and doing this," and reprioritizing your money. And I think we've done a really good job of that in Tacoma, of saying, "We're going to stop doing this, you know, because we think this one's so important." And so I think cost neutral, to me, means that we either say, "We can't do it because we can't sustain it, we can't do it over time," or, "Hey, we're going to look at it, and we're going to take the money, you know, we're going to rob Peter to pay Paul, because it's worth it for, you know, for the benefit of students."
If I clarify, I didn't mean to preclude programs, but I do want to have better planning if we're going to launch into something that is of a magnitude of a Sammy. You know, a program within a school is smaller, probably can be sustained by moving resources, perhaps around, as was done at Lincoln Center and so on. But if we're going to be looking at capital facilities and things like that, I would like to see us at least be able to sustain it for a while without having to take money from other programs that may be just as valuable to the district. So that's what I'm concerned about. Too much robbing Peter, pay Paul. Yeah, I know. I guess I was in that business too long. But my concern is just making sure that we don't start something that is good, and we get to a point where dollars get tighter, because I don't have a lot of faith in the legislature to truly take care of all of our needs. And that's where I was at. I don't mean to throw a wet blanket, but I've seen that happen. So that's where I was at on that.
I think we're on the same page, and this gives me flashbacks to our innovative conversations, because it's challenging information. My end of it is simply, I don't want people to say, "Gosh, I don't know how to plan that," so I'm not going to bring the idea up, because it might be the best idea ever.
No. But if we get to the, looking at approving it, then we need to be asking.
Agreed.
Good.
All right. Any other board questions or comments?
Good morning.
Superintendent, do you have anything else for us?
So what we really like is for you to give us some direction. So are you thinking that you want to look for an, you know, RFP? Or I hear what you said about, you know, waiting for public comment, but you can let us know whether or not we should prepare an action item for the second board meeting in February.
I support the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you.
I agree.
I was going to say ditto, but I'm the third person.
I saw that film going up.
I agree.
I'm supportive.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. The other thing I'd asked Director Heinz is, I know you're going to love to hear this, but we would love to have a study session on the first Thursday in February. It would be short and sweet, short and sweet. We have two things that we really want to talk about. We really feel like we need a construction update, you know, to give you a little bit more information. So we had the meeting with Metro Parks and the board to find out. We want to make sure that you have some of the nitty-gritty of that, what's going on. And then the second thing is, have we given them the first copy of the committee structure of looking at it?
No.
Okay. You want to talk about that? We thought we might introduce that at that study session also.
So Vice President Viall and I have not had a chance to discuss it.
But we will.
I'm sorry.
But, yeah. So I'd like to have that conversation first before we bring it out.
Okay, sorry.
But so to foreshadow what we are thinking about, how we're organized with our committee structure, and looking at some recommendations to bring to you that would align our committee structure with the way we have organized our strategic plan and benchmarks and budget.
Are you suggesting that perhaps as a board, we should be innovative?
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
I thought we should.
I mean that very respectfully.
Right. Well, we thought we should set a good example. So.
So the idea would be to align committee structure to our goals and benchmarks. But we want to have something concrete to bring for the conversation piece, and it's not quite yet finished.
I guess we were thinking about somewhat way the city does theirs around having, we may just look at some of our committees and recommend whether or not we even really need to have them. Some of them may not be where they need to be, and then, you know, we can discuss how to align them. But right now, they're all over the place. And...
I feel like it's a great thing to wait until, to see your recommendation before we come in. Otherwise, I think that we could have lots and lots of debate without anything on the whiteboard. So I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So I'd like to ask if we can't integrate that next study session into a board meeting, a regular business meeting.
Okay.
Because our business meetings have been shorter.
Okay.
And if we have a short study session, then the resources that are used on a study session can be used in our business meeting. So I would appreciate looking into that.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good suggestion. We'll take that into consideration. I think that could work.
Look at the 12th.
With that in mind, as you're arranging business, if I can note, I will be out of town on the 19th in Baltimore, and I will not be at that meeting. So I would appreciate being at that study session.
Okay. So we'll look at the board meeting on the 12th to have the conversation around committee structure. And then the board meeting on the 26th is when we would potentially take action on the RFP for innovative schools.
May I make a comment? You mentioned we were going to get a construction report. I would appreciate it. As we move through, and we have a lot on the plate and a lot of things flying around, if the board could have a monthly report from Mr. Merakami, where we are on the design, where we are moving forward toward bids, and so that when people ask us in the community, "Where are you with the Stewart design?" and so on, so that we, as a board, are getting more information about how we are proceeding forward with all the schools. Doesn't have to be a great in-depth, but somewhat like the little sheet he gave us with a little more detail, that, for example, Stewart Design will be completed, bid will, you know, well, we already have done the Stewart, but the Wayne Wright bid will be going out at such and such and things like that, so that we're aware of where we are on that scheduling of those schools that we need to complete.
We can do that.
Great, thank you.
Why don't we put it on the website, for everybody to have that information?
I assume we would.
Yeah.
Can we just clarify? We heard a number of different ideas that I want to make sure that we've captured, so that when we bring you a proposed RFP for your consideration, we captured those. We heard, I heard, forgive me, feel free to jump in here, that a smaller concept, not necessarily another large comprehensive approach. So what I mean by that is secondary, I thought I heard that we weren't necessarily interested in opening up, like another Lincoln High School, for example.
That's not what I heard.
That's not what I heard either, because I think I heard, "We're not going to build or buy any new buildings."
So size, size is not a consideration.
So if somebody said they want to have a history school, and they convert one, that'd be great. Or, you know, a classical education school, one school would change to that.
And we'll name it Hailey School of Classical Arts.
I think, though, that one of the things we want to do, I'm asking you, is, you know, anytime we decrease by a large amount the population of our comprehensive high schools, we put them in jeopardy also. So...
I would hope that any RFP that we are given is presented with a cognizance of its effect on the area schools in the district.
Thank you.
That should be a piece of the thought process.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I heard...
Deputy Superintendent, I think also what I heard from my colleagues, right now, we're just in a consideration phase, and there was a budget element tied to it. So an RFP would not be precluded based on size, but would be tied to budget. So if you're going to come with a proposal to create the history high school, you would have a pretty good idea how it would be funded. So I think we want to hear, what I've heard is, we want options, small schools within a school, but I don't think we want to limit ourselves during this process based on arbitrary things like size or enrollment. I think we want people to be mindful of those as they put proposals together. But I think I've heard people want to entertain innovative schools to add to our portfolio. Did I capture that correctly?
I don't think we should limit anything at this point.
Yeah.
But I do want to second what Director Ashka said. And I think, Director Miller, you and I talked about this a long time ago, about what sort of Sammy, the impact that was on Foss Comprehensive High School at that point in time. And I think that we do need to be cognizant of that when we, when those schools opened, it did impact the International Baccalaureate Program, and that we do need to be cognizant of that in any RFP about what would be the impact, potential impact on our comprehensive high school. So if we're going to open another large 1,000-high school program, then I think we need to really take a look at, how is that impact the capacity of our schools?
I'm a fairly creative person, but I can't imagine how you could do a very large school without having a significant impact that would negate it. But I don't want to say that that's a parameter, because there might be a brilliant idea. I'm not the most brilliant person in the world, just because, now you know. So that's why I don't want to put that limit on it.
I appreciate that. That's why I like to check the thinking, so that we don't walk out of the room and understand.
I think, I'm sorry, just to close that out, I think that I would rather the creativity be, the ability to be creative exists for the person that provides the RFP, and the diligence and the onus of making certain that it's not a negative impact on the district falls to the board, and that we wrestle through the impact, financial impacts, enrollments, and those sorts of things. So bring us your innovative ideas, and we will, through a rigorous process, make determinations that are in the best interest of the district as a whole.
So the RFP will not call out a specific size, but it will discuss in some manner that consideration will be for impact around surrounding schools. Is that fair? I heard you were very clear that you'd want, that RFP should include a financial sustainability plan.
It's stated in the policy already.
Yep. That you wanted to call out equity and achievement more explicitly, as well as refer to the policies more explicitly in the RFP process, so that it was not assumed. That the community had an opportunity to participate in the RFP process as well as staff, that it was not an either-or. Is that clear?
Correct. Yes. Anything else? Okay. With that, we'll close the study session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.